Called meeting to order, please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the December 3rd, 2019 Post Falls City Council Meeting. Clerk will note that all council members are present, and I will announce there are four public hearings tonight. I thought that was going to be two weeks ago, and they surprised me, but we have them tonight. So if you do wish to testify, there are forms on the back on the podium, please sign them, turn them in to Shannon or Clerk. And under ceremonies, announcements, and appointments, I understand we are meeting somebody new tonight, some new folks tonight, new officers tonight.
That is correct. Well, good evening, Mayor and Council, Pat Knight, Chief of Police. And tonight, I get the distinct honor of introducing our most recent promoted canine handler and our most recent addition to the team, our canine Donna. And they just came back from their first school back in Indiana, and they flew in, I think, just a couple of days ago. They're here, I'll bring them in. Just wanted to get a chance to introduce them, and I think on the packet tonight is a contract for the canine selection, so that'll be signed hopefully and move forward.
Chief, didn't you see? This dog is a, is it a drug dog?
This is a single purpose, so it's a narcotics detection dog, but it's also a dog that we want to have as a PR tool, getting out in the public, you know, meeting folks, being in the schools, wanted more of a social dog as well. This dog, I feel that, you know, someone could walk up and pet this dog, and I'm not scared of liability on that one, so. But I'll kick this off real quick. So Officer Lauren Pearson is our selection for the handler, great selection, if I don't say so myself. She's a Spokane County Explorer Program from '09 to '14, started with the Police Department here in Post Falls in June of '17. She was selected as a canine handler just as past September, and with her is the dog that they went back and selected. Now she and Sergeant Frank Bowden, who's our senior canine handler and a post-certified instructor, they went back to select the dog, knowing exactly what we wanted in mind for our city, for our department, and looked at multitude of dogs, and this was the one that was selected, Donna. And this is a German Shepherd, she was born in the Netherlands in August of 2018, so she's 16 months old. Selected October 29th in this year at the Von Lick Kennels, which is back in Denver, Indiana. The pictures I was shown when Lauren was sending back weekly photos were obviously snow, it looked like back there, so they worked in some good conditions. As a team, they completed 120 hours of training in narcotics detection. They still need to complete 40 hours of training with Sergeant Bowden in our certification process, and we hope to have that all certified and done by December, and they'll be on the street together. So again, we'd like to introduce Donna and Lauren, and I don't know Lauren, if you want to let the dog introduce, probably in the back.
Can you bring Donna over to my house to play with my 11-month-old?
Yeah, the decorations, I didn't want to worry about those. Yeah, her favorite thing is a tennis ball, obviously.
I left my puppy in the house by himself, do you think maybe Donna could go over and make sure he's not in trouble?
I would assume so, yeah, I think they're on duty, they probably could. Well, we thought it was a good way to kick the meeting off.
I appreciate it, it's nice, I like the fact that the dog is one that can be approached, and I think that's, kids are going to love that, so thank you. Thank you very much, Lauren, and the other officers who are here tonight. We do have a few announcements. Wednesday, December 4th, from 5:30, starting at 5:30 tomorrow, in the Police Department Community Room, a joint workshop at the City Council Planning and Zoning Commission and the Park and Recreation Commission are going to meet on impact fees. Feel free to attend. And I will mention that it's the second time we've had a city meeting that's cost me the ability to go to a Gonzaga game, so I will try to be very polite tomorrow night. Friday, December 6th, Winterfest on City Hall Plaza, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., kickoff the holiday season with family and friends at Winterfest, starting with the pop-up Holiday Market on Fourth Avenue from 4:00 until 8:00 p.m., followed by lighting the community tree, and Santa will be in his workshop. Fun for the whole family with caroling, choirs, outdoor campfires with warm cider, and roasting marshmallows and crafts for all the little elves. The Post Falls Museum will be open for tours. We will also be accepting donations for the food bank, unwrap new toys, blankets, and gently used coats. Saturday, December 7th, is the Fourth Annual Post Fall Holidays Tiny Tree Festival and Brunch at Red Lion Templin's on the River. Brunch, mimosa bar, tiny tree auction, and entertainment. All proceeds benefit educational program and opportunities through the Post Falls Chamber of Commerce. And then we also received this message, the city received a call from a woman that wanted to pass along her thanks to a couple of city employees for their help last week. Patty Hall was driving in Post Falls when she got a flat tire, and as she was waiting for her husband to get there, two city employees, Tim DeWitt and Richard Clark, stopped and changed her tire for her. Thank you, Tim and Richard, for all you do with the city and for your great act of service to our community, it is appreciated. Also on December 8th is the annual Holidays and Heroes, which is, Chief was telling me this year, they are providing for 138 kids, which is amazing. Last year was the first time in 21 years that they did not have to turn any kids away, and they're doing well this year, and they anticipate not having to turn away any kids again this year. That being said, donations are still welcome. And then I was just going to make one other announcement. I've received probably 10 or 12 emails, letters, from people asking me to keep the, to either shut the wake off, eliminate wake on the Spokane River, keep it as it is, modify it, et cetera. And I haven't responded to those emails and letters because it's not the city's decision, it's not my decision. I will read the letters as they come in, but for anybody if I have not responded to you, that's a county issue, it's not the city's issue. And I realize there are cities, residents of the city of Post Falls who live on the river, but that decision is with the county. So if I do not respond to you, it's not because I'm not interested, I've got my own feeling on it, but it is not a city issue. So I just wanted everyone to be aware of that. Are there any amendments to the agenda tonight?
We do have one. We need to amend Action Item D on the consent calendar to reflect that the agreement is between the city of Spirit Lake and the city of Post Falls, rather than this Rathdrum and the city of Post Falls. The agenda has been amended, but we need to make the amendment official by a vote.
The information was accurate, it's just that it was noticeably incorrect.
Yeah, the agenda was incorrect, but the contract was correct.
I have a motion.
Move to amend the consent calendar, Item D, to read the city of Spirit Lake instead of the city of Rathdrum.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Are there any declarations of conflict tonight?
While I have no stake or interest in Idaho veneer or any of the associated property, I have family members that do, so to avoid the appearance of conflict, I'm going to recuse myself from public hearing A on the Idaho veneer zone change and any actions resulting thereof.
Sir, would you please present the consent calendar?
Item A is minutes from the November 19th, 2019 city council meeting. Item B is payables November 12th through November 25th, 2019. Item C is a mutual aid agreement between the Cootney County Sheriff's Office and the Post Falls Police Department for Law Enforcement Services in Corbin Park. Item D is mutual assistance compact between the city of Spirit Lake and city of Post Falls Police Departments for temporary sheltering of dogs. Item E is construction improvement agreement for Gabirio Estates. Item F is acceptance of the canvassed November 2019 election results. And item G is canine unit assignment agreement for Officer Lauren Pearson.
Any questions on the consent calendar? Seeing none, I entertain a motion.
I'd move for approval as presented.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Shannon, please take the roll.
Anthony?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Now we're into our public hearings, and the first public hearing tonight is Idaho veneer zone change. Open public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor Jacobson, Council President Wilhelm, and members of City Council. John Manley, Planning Manager here at the city of Post Falls, introducing the Idaho veneer zone change, RZNE 1, 2019. The owner and applicant is the Idaho veneer company. The representative, Rand Wickman, is here this evening to discuss their interests in their proposal. The applicant is requesting approval of a zone change of approximately 20.5 acres of a mix of heavy industrial and Smart Code 4 zoning to the Smart Code 5 urban center zoning designation. On October 8th of this year, the Planning and Zoning Commission met, reviewed the zoning criteria, and recommended a approval of this proposed zone change. The location is, as you see here, in the red-hatched area. This is just east of where we're at, so it intersects, is at the intersection of Idaho and Fourth Avenue. Idaho is what's a minor arterial, and Fourth would be a major collector supporting this project. The mix that you see here is for the heavy industrial of 13.5 acres with the SC4 being the seven acres. The, currently, it's a mix of industrial on this site, there is one residence or two, I believe. It's currently an operating mill facility. Water and sewer would be provided by the city of Post Falls. Also, when you look at the location, there is a city-linked bus route that's in close proximity to this request. So in review, and the basis for the Planning and Zoning Commission, their recommendation was they go through the zone change review criteria. So I'm going to go over the first three, and then I have a series of images and supportive documentation to represent the baseline for their recommendation. So the first one is, is the proposal consistent with the comprehensive plan? Secondly, is the goals and policies in the plan supportive of this? And there's much discussion in the staff report of how this is complementary. The other one is, is it consistent with the street classifications, traffic patterns, existing development, future land uses, community plans, and any other geographic features? And the reason for these is, the intent is to create a balance of land uses within Post Falls, with creating a desirable, stable community. So first, looking at the comp plan, you look at, we have commercial on the west side of Idaho, and on the east side of Idaho, we got residential. So you can deduce that they're looking for some mix, the complants, looking at a mix of some commercial and residential in that area. Looking at the surrounding zoning right here, the dark purple is the SC5, the lighter purple is the SC4. What you see in orange is R3 for apartments, red being commercial, and the gray, the dark gray is the heavy industrial. It's more like a legacy zoning district at this time. Any new uses, we need to get a zone changed to even create new development. So looking at the SC5, they're more or less desiring to extend the SC5 further to the east to the terminus of where that R3 begins. So that kind of goes over the zoning and the land use, the comp plan designation for that area. This right here is an excerpt from the city center plan. In the city center plan, and I apologize for the font being small, but it's tough when you have an 11 by 17 in the plan, but you see here, they had three different levels of intensity in that. You had a traditional city center, a medium-density city center, and a high-density city center. And I must say that this plan was approved July of 2005, so it's been a while, it's been on the shelf for about, you know, 14 years, and there's been incremental progress since that time. And so they're looking at different types of things that it could be complementary, and you can see here that depending on the level of intensity, varying degrees of meeting the intent of that city center plan. This application is more consistent with the high-density city center plan in that. And as you see here, this elliptical kind of transparent shape from that image, I kind of zoom in in that area, and you can see that at this location, this is where that SC5 request is at. They're looking at a multimodal transit hub, some mixed uses, an extension of Idaho Street to Third. So the proposed SC5 that they have for that is very consistent with the intent of this aspect of the city center plan. Therefore, going back to that criteria, looking at, is it consistent with street classifications? It would be. Traffic patterns, you get I-90 interchange just off here at Spokane Street, it would be complementary to that. Existing development, I'll go into that on some of these other review criteria. Specifically, I'll just jump to the last one. Industrial zoning is typically assigned for properties with sufficient access to major transportation routes and may be situated away from residential zoning. So currently, we have that legacy heavy industrial. This is insinuating that if you have an opportunity to, if you have industrial and you have residential around it, and you have an opportunity to remove it, then you'd be consistent with that criteria, and that's more or less what's being proposed this evening. Similarly, going up to this criteria above the top one, commercial and high-density residential zoning is typically assigned along streets with higher road classification, all of which are permitted in this zoning district. And then the, this one here, this fifth one deals with neighborhood commercial and lower-density residential, which really wouldn't be applicable to this request. I do want to note, and I'll show what's permitted in the SC5 here. So what you see here, and I have highlighted it in yellow, the SC5, and it corresponds off to the left for residential. Pretty much any residential product besides a single-family house standalone on a lot would be permitted within that SC5 zoning district, which you would see in a more of your urban center type zone for that kind of flexibility. You're looking at your lodging office and retail functions in the SC5, you know, they're pretty much all permitted within that zoning district. So it gives you that flexibility to do that mixing of uses. Similarly, looking at the civic uses permitted in the SC5, they're all pretty much permitted. An exhibition center needs an administrative authorization, and same with some outdoor auditorium, outside of that, they're all permitted. You can see here, for the agricultural type of uses, they'd all need some sort of administrative authorization for like a kennel, automotive stuff, gasoline, automobile service stations, truck maintenance, drive-through facilities, all administrative authorizations, which you would typically, in your urban centers, maybe not want to permit some of those outright, and that's, hence why that's being, corresponding in that direction. Looking at educational services, that's attainable through either administrative authorization or permitted, as you see there. And same with the civil support, there's plenty of opportunities there for those to occur in that zoning district. What you do see is, for the industrial uses in that SC5, a lot of them aren't permitted, like your heavy industrial type uses, your light industrial, truck stops for that matter, you wouldn't necessarily want in your downtown. It's possible, maybe, as an artisan, if you're doing something to manufacture and do some commerce, that potentially would be plausible as like a retail trade-type activity. Laboratory facilities, you see there, water supply facilities, so you can kind of get the gist of what's permitted and not permitted in that SC4, SC5 zone versus if you go to your typical commercial or your multifamily zone, you end up sectoring out certain uses a lot more, and I'm deducing that the reason for the applicant's request is for this flexibility in the SC5. Any questions at this point? So here's the agencies that was routed on this proposal. Of that, the Police Department did comment, and they remain neutral on the proposal. There's the location again, and do you have any comments or questions from the staff report?
You answered mine on the difference between SC4 and SC5, so I appreciate that.
Right, thanks.
I just have one, and that is, does this cover the entire mill site? Because there's that one piece up there that's still heavy industrial, is that part of the existing mill site, or is that the first?
So I'll have to go back a slide, but what you see here from the mill site, this side east of that proposal is what you see as the apartments. West of the apartments to this block here, this is where the old haunted house is at, on this block. So when you go one block east of where the haunted house is at, is where this proposal is being located, all the way to the site, beginning point of those apartments. You do have, because Idaho veneer does own some land, if you go back to the zoning map, you do see that they have a remnant of some, I believe that's still there, it may have been sold off. Rand could probably speak to that a little bit clearer, but we do have some heavy industrial at that location, as well as the fire station is still heavy industrial.
I was just curious why that piece of heavy industrial was still in kind of an island there?
Well, I can only assume that as they were operating the mill site, they didn't want to set up a situation where they're legal non-conforming, so if they wanted to expand or operate their business, they wanted to make sure that industrial protected their interest. I believe now that they're trying to market it for a higher and better use, they're looking for a zoning, a district to help support their endeavors.
So I, this is just speculation, so do you think at some time that parcel to the north would come in with the same zoning then? With the fire station?
Are you speaking?
Because when you go there now, there's a sign, I think, for development.
Oh, yeah, right? Yeah, right about that location? From what I've heard, and I can only speak from what I've heard, Rand could probably speak more clearly what their intent is, that they desire to leave that as a commercial site because of its nature and proximity to I-90 and Fourth Avenue. Doing the, more of your mixed zoning district doesn't make as much sense there, and they'd probably want to do more of an auto-centric type development, commercial development there, but they may change their plans down the road, I don't.
Any questions, John?
On the railroad, the railroad spur that comes off the main line there, does it run all the way through the property, or does it end right there where they're asking to be annexed?
The spur ends, if I can find an aerial, that's not colored in the picture, spur ends at about that location. There's like, like some loading location for that.
So the spur would come into the city limits of that part of it?
No, actually, the, all that's railroad right-of-way. So at time that the, that rail spur, whatever the future holds on that, that's when that would be addressed.
Okay, thanks, Shannon.
Right, thank you.
Mayor Jacobson, while waiting for the applicant to come up, I know there's some folks that came in a little bit late, so it might remind folks that if they want to testify tonight at one of the hearings, that there's some forms in the back to fill out and turn in to Shannon, what he said.
So if anyone did come in late and wishes to testify, forms in the back, fill them out, turn them in. And when you are testifying, please note, there is a timer, and we will hold you to the timer, so please just keep that in mind as you speak.
Thank you, sir. There we go. Good evening, Mayor and Council, my name is Rand Wickman. My address for the record is 2992 East Gotham Bay Road, Harrison, Idaho. I'm happy to be here tonight representing Idaho veneer. And in this zone change application, some of this, I'm going to try not to repeat what John has said. This is the site, as you can see there, it is the, it is the mill site, and probably best to use the, there, the mill operations are on here, you got a little bit of the log yard here, you can see the apartments, the new apartments off the site there. But the existing mill really straddles the Idaho Road right-of-way there, and actually, some of the buildings are actually built into it. That's the way we did things back in the good old days, I guess. Surrounding the site, there's a lot of, there are residential uses, it's really quite a mixed bag. You have churches, you've got the apartments over here, and then you've got a mixed bag of commercial and miscellaneous uses. The city actually owns this property right here, and that might be a well site or something like that, I'm not sure what. I think you've got some utilities on that. Here's the zoning map, the question came up earlier about this piece. I don't know if the mill ever owned that, to be honest with you, I don't know why it's zoned heavy industrial. It's currently, let's go back here, it's currently mostly vacant, that'd be this piece right here. And actually, the city's piece is zoned heavy industrial there as well. And so, but I don't know that the Idaho veneer folks ever actually even owned that piece. They don't currently own it, they do own some miscellaneous parcels mixed in here, and they were fine just to leave those as commercial, they thought those were appropriately zoned, and so that's why they are not part of this request. As you can, as John indicated, we're headed toward, or hoping for SC5 zoning. We kind of, for those of you that have been on the council for a while, back in 2006, we kind of had a foreshadowing of this day because we had come in and rezoned, in 2016, we had rezoned this piece here to R3 and this piece here to commercial because the mill didn't need those anymore, and they knew they were downsizing, and they knew at that time that the day was coming when they would be closing up shop. And, and that's where we find ourselves today, is in that circumstance that we thought we were headed toward a few years ago. So this really is the end of an era. Idaho veneer has existed at that site since 1953. They are a good company, they've been an asset to the city, I believe. But the economics of making forest products in this day and age and in that location aren't what they used to be. And so we anticipate the mill closing probably within the next year, or as soon as they get, somebody comes along with the right offer, and, and they'll be closing up. It's possible that they'll, they'll close up shop and start removing buildings. They're a little bit on the fence about that because they don't know if somebody may want to come in and try and salvage some aspects of those buildings. For somebody, perhaps, that could be an asset, and for others, it's a liability. So they're still trying to figure that out. But they have no immediate plans for any development, they're, they're looking for the exit, and, and so that's, that's where they're at. But this, you know, while we might mourn the, kind of, it's sad to see a part of the city's history go away. You know, timber being such an important aspect, an important industry in the region, this is one of the last mills in the area here. It does present, I think, a I think, a historic opportunity for this part of the city, and, you know, the city has been, for some time, looking for a way to create a downtown, and you've done plans on it, and this certainly does change the direction on land use in that neighborhood. As I said there, it furthers the goal of creating a city center, and it also inspires substantial new investment, not just on this property, but, you know, we are kind of the ugly duckling of the neighborhood, we recognize that, and I think once that mill is gone, I think it will result in additional investment on other properties in the neighborhood as well. Everybody's kind of been in a holding pattern, wanting that ugly mill, you know, this kind of intrusive land use, wanting that to go away before they really know what to do there, and I think once that mill closes, as sad as it is to see it go, I think, I think new and exciting things happen for the city in that area. So I think, I think it's a, I think it's a real opportunity in that regard. John has done a good job with the staff report and with his presentation, and he's thoroughly addressed the approval criteria and the comprehensive plan. While I could reiterate all of that and probably put you to sleep, I would not subject you to that, he did not raise any concerns for the zone change in the staff report. Similarly, the planning commission held their hearing in October, we had two members of the public testify there, the planning commission unanimously recommended approval and made the necessary findings, and again, all of those are in the record, I don't know that I can improve on that, so I'm going to let that stand as it is, and with that, you know, you've got a long agenda, I'm going to keep it short, like, you know, I could go through all of this stuff, I don't want to, and I don't want to subject you to it, and so unless you said, hey Rand, let's go through all that stuff, I'm going to quit here, and if you have questions, I'm happy to answer them, and we respectfully request your approval of this zone change.
Any questions, Rand, at this point?
I don't know if it's a question for Rand or back to John, but if we approve this zone change, could somebody else come in and buy that mill and operate it as a mill with the zone changed? I know you mentioned something in terms of a legal.
So if someone bought it and they didn't increase the square footage, and they wanted to operate as it was, they could, as a pre-existing permitted use?
Okay.
Subject to it not sitting for more than 10 years, I mean, if it sat vacant for 10 years, I believe there's a grandfathering that kind of expires, but outside of that, then yeah. I think that, I think exceedingly unlikely, there's, it's, all the equipment's very old, and it just doesn't make, the location doesn't really make good sense anymore, and so, and you don't see a lot of people beating down the doors to build new mills for forest products these days.
Any questions, Rand?
Nope.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you very much.
People wishing to testify. Wishing to testify in neutral, Mr. Flowers.
Bob Flowers, good evening, Mr. Mayor, council. I put on the paper neutral, and that's because of two main reasons. One, Idaho veneer has been a great neighbor to the city of Post Falls for a long time, and if John and his family have reached the point where it's time to retire, more power to them, they deserve it, they've worked hard for a long time, they've been a great neighbor. My real objections to this zone change is SC five, which has, as far as I'm concerned, the smart code should have gone away a long time ago, I thought it was going to by the discussion of the council in earlier days. It sets minimums on what they can do on that property, not maximums. It's, it will create probably a lot of coffee shops, ice cream shops, doodad shops with stacks of apartments, they can go up to four stories in there, and so all they're really creating is a zone for a bunch of minimum paying jobs and apartments. They're not really creating family income type jobs, like the mill did for umpteen years, a lot of families spent their lives working there, kids were raised from that money. This is the last, that's the last I'm going to say about SC five, because I just believe that that particular zone is, just doesn't fit. On the personal side, that's the last mill we got, folks, that's the history, one last bit of history for the city of Post Falls, and to stack a bunch of minimum paying businesses with apartments on top of it in his place just seems wrong. It's, there should be, as the gentleman, the representative from Idaho veneer mentioned, it's quite a historic site. I don't think any one of you can remember before that mill was here, I sure couldn't because I wasn't around then, but there should be something put in there to recognize this mill and for the contributions it's done to this city over the years, not stacking a bunch of apartments up there four stories high. Thank you.
Thank you. Applicant care to rebut? Don't need to, if you have something to say, come on.
Thank you, mayor, again, Rand Wickman for the record, I would just offer, you know, I certainly understand Mr. Flowers' concerns there, we labored for probably close to three months before we, oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
We labored for probably close to three months on what zone should we apply for here, and we were back and forth about SC four, we talked to staff, we talked to any number of folks about it, we landed on SC five, but I will tell you, we're not, we're not passionate about it, and if, you know, if the city council believed that a, you know, an SC four or some other zone was appropriate there, we, you know, we're not thrilled about the delay or anything like that, but, you know, we're not, we don't feel strongly about SC five, but we feel strongly we need a zone change, certainly, and that's all I have for you.
Thank you. There's a gentleman that was late, and I know we had added, but.
So we do have a gentleman that would like to testify, he's signed the wrong form, but we can probably get him the right form, one caveat, we're going to have to allow additional rebuttal time if there's anything that comes in.
So what we'll do is, we'll let the gentleman speak, and then Rand, if there's anything else you want to say, we'll let you come back up.
Peter Cooper, we're going to, do we need to have him sign the right form when he's done?
Yeah, we'll get it to him afterwards.
Mr. Cooper, when you're done testifying, would you see Shannon, she'll have you sign the right form, name for the record, please.
I'm Peter Cooper, my company, Pan American Railway, Inc., is in the business of short haul, intermodal freight and railroad development, and port, inland port district development. I've long envisioned this rail line existing as a multimodal passenger and freight and trail corridor, I've made several longstanding overtures to the BNSF on this matter, and of course, money talks and so on, but let's don't make the same mistake the city of Coeur d'Alene has done, going to my overtures for a free, non-subsidized transit system. Yes, with the freight business, I'll supply free transit, rail transit, with no operating subsidies to the city or state. I would like to make an overture to the city of council, to hear me out on an inland port district concept before making the decision on the zone change because of the issues that might occur if we revisit this in the future, it might be much more cantankerous after this zone change occurs, and you go to the trouble of the zone change now, raise your hands, you voted in, then we come back in a few, next year or so, and want to do it all over again for inland port district, somewhat labor intensive and frustrating, so let's put the brakes on this, maybe not have it go away with the zone change, but let's stop and smell the coffee and see what Mr. Cooper has in mind before doing the zone change, because what I am proposing would gentify the site while protecting the heavy industry capabilities under the podium, as I proposed for my similar port district for Coeur d'Alene, that never happened on the Atlas Mill site, because my investors got fed up with dealing with the city of Coeur d'Alene and listening to all the whoopie-doo, and now we have, to get an idea on which, the changes in the demographics, and the changes in the transportation industry, and the logistics industry is screaming for high density urban port districts, they're fed up with building point, River Point type developments on the freeway and interstate because the logistics isn't there, they want to come downtown, they want to have multi-store housing, automated warehousing, and they want the workers living near where they're working, so they show up on time, they aren't stuck in traffic on the interstate, like they would be with the S5 zoning that we're talking about, where the apartment dwellers that live in these apartments, the gentleman's going on about, would most likely get on the interstate and go to Spokane for a job, or to Liberty Lake, instead of walking with their lunchbox down to the, my new sawmill that I would be putting on this site for quality lumber, which is the other change that's occurring in the timber industry, and they want quality lumber, they don't want to have just scrag mill lumber sold at Home Depot that falls apart when you buy it, they want the clear lumber, they want big logs, I've got loggers that are just chasing for me to buy their big logs.
Mr. Cooper, time's up, sir.
And so, let's just catch your breath with this, meet with me on this, figure out how we could put an inland port district in with public-private money, and have a real downtown that has the industrial jobs base for sustainability, as well as the cutesy-purdy stuff on top of the podium that looks cute, and where the dogs walk, and the frisbees are thrown, and the apartments are, so we could have both.
Thank you, sir, that's time. We have one more, I believe. Also wishing to testify in opposition, Cynthia, Cynthia, I won't, will not pronounce your last name properly, so if you'd pronounce it for me when you come forward.
This is actually mayor and council.
Excuse me, your name?
Cynthia Winnicky.
Thank you very much.
The first time I've ever addressed a city council or a meeting, so I'm understandably nervous, and haven't had much time to collect my thoughts. Mainly, I want to express my agreement with Mr. Flowers, I think a better use of that property could be made than perhaps what is proposed. I don't believe that apartments are the best use. I don't think that's in the best interest of the greatest number of people. That type of housing, having people, so to speak, living in pens, doesn't contribute a sense of humanity that I think is really crucial for the time that we live in, contributes to idleness, regardless of jobs that may be provided, that perhaps don't provide a living wage, that perhaps don't provide that opportunity to reach for excellence that we all hope for, to make the best of ourselves, to to that spirit of humanity and brotherhood that should be universal, but dies more and more daily. I think a better use could be made of that, and I think that it's our responsibility to dig deeper, and I think it's our responsibility to look further than our own peculiar special and consider that there are others, most of us, in fact, who all want to reach for something better, who all want to reach for something higher, and many people are in a type of despair because they don't see their way to do it. I don't have any solutions to offer. I don't have many ideas, but I think we all have the responsibility to look at it beyond the surface, below the because there are other ways. Every person needs to have the opportunity to create something of value, and it's our responsibility to give them that opportunity. I think that's as much as I have.
Thank you, ma'am, appreciate your comments. We're done, right?
I believe that's all that we have, so we'd need one more round of rebuttal.
Rand Wickman again for the record, and I apologize, I'd hoped to hold my tongue, but I didn't, or can't. I just would add, you know, you, I don't know that the city has had anybody do significant development in your current SC five zone, if you're going to have that happen, this is probably your best opportunity for that, because the site is large enough, it's well positioned, and, you know, if you want to see some development, significant development subject to that SC five zone, this is probably your best opportunity, and if you don't, you know, then, you know, then we ought probably get rid of the SC five zone, you know, it just shouldn't be there. You know, as I said, we spent a long time back and forth, what should we request for our, for our zoning here, and we talked to staff quite a bit about it, and I'm not going to lay this at staff's feet, but staff's recommendation was an important consideration for us and why we are pursuing the SC five, and so with that, again, thank you for listening, and we respectfully request your approval.
Thank you, sir. With that, I will close the public hearing. Council, how would you like to act?
I would like to ask John Manley a question, if I could. John, so Rand said that staff recommended the SC five, so can you? recommended the SC5, so can you tell me, you're the staff, so...
Yes.
Okay.
How the process kind of goes here is we meet with any interested developer, builder, whatever change they want to do with their place, whether it's a new business, whether it's adding on a shop, or whether it's developing vacant land. And oftentimes, they ask staff, our first question generally to them is, what do you want to do? What are your interests? Because once we assess what they would like to do, then that starts isolating potential zoning districts for their needs. And then, once we get there, we go, does the comp plan, those are review policies even support your desires for your development if it ends up being more of a bigger-picture thing like this for a zone change? So, in meetings with them and their potential builder to the east, that they showed various forms of types of developments they would like to see on here, and it didn't necessarily fit all in an R3, didn't necessarily all fit in a CCS. And so, we sit down and go, well, you have choices. You could do a CCS with a special-use permit, that's an angle you could take. You can take SC4, okay, but SC4, you're capped at four stories, you still get some mixes, and you have a minimum base density of eight, that could be an option, we discussed that. We also discussed the SC5, where you can go to four stories and you get those mixing of uses in there. At the end of the day, my recollection is that we punted them and said, okay, when you decide what angle you want to attack this, please present that to us, and then we'll present it forward. Because really, the comp plan could support all three endeavors that you wanted to go down. We've heard from council that they don't necessarily like a CCS with the, and some people from the public, CCS, and then coming back later with a special-use permit, you know. So, I mean, we talked about that pretty openly and candidly, too. And so, you know, so we're here, the way I recollect it is more this is the applicant's desire. And tonight, we did hear that they're open to potentially go into SC4, too. So, I don't know, does that answer the question?
Yeah, thanks.
Just quick, quick. Does SC5 provide more opportunities for businesses there than an SC4 would, or does it make...
Well, I'll go get my, the land use, so you can see some of those differences, but...
Well, you showed them on that one.
Yeah.
You showed them on that one.
You showed them on the ones.
They could put in a motel.
Yeah, so it just gives more opportunities with SC5.
There were not that many significant differences.
There are not a whole lot. Like, you couldn't do a single-family home, like, bottom-down lot in the SC5 that you can do in an SC4. So, there's some controlling elements there, depending on your angle that you want to look at it. So, and it's the scale, like Rand alluded to, I mean, if you're looking for more of your urban-type environment, you could go up to four stories. You could potentially build additional supportive rooftops to support commercial, if that was your angle. But at the end of the day, we're here to review kind of what they're requesting.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I guess my comments would be that, first and foremost, goes back to personal property rights. And the Malloy family has been a great family to be in our community for the last, I don't know how long.
Sixty-six years.
Sixty-six years. Comes down to, what do they want to do with the property? Is there a property? As long as they provide to us a plan that doesn't have a huge negative impact on the rest of the community, I think we have to consider that. Obviously, that's what they've done when they've gone to staff and talked about this. So then it comes back to, well, what's the best use of this property? They looked at it, they said SC5. I think that, as Rand alluded to, SC5, if we're ever going to have mix of commercial and shops and housing and parks and all that kind of stuff, this is, you got to have a big chunk of land, and this is a great place for it. I read through when the planning and zoning reviewed this, they looked at it from the standpoint of SC4 as well. There isn't really a whole lot you can't do with SC4 that you can do with SC5. So it comes back to the basis of wanting to make a zone change. People own the land, it's their land, this is what they want to do with it. It's not going to have a negative impact on the rest of the city. If anything, it's going to have, could have a huge positive impact as we develop the rest of the downtown area. So, from that standpoint, I would definitely vote in favor of changing the zoning to SC5.
Okay, I would make a motion to approve the Idaho veneer company's own change, file
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Call, please.
Wolf.
Aye.
Wilhelm.
Aye.
Malloy, oops, sorry. Orders?
Aye.
Thorson.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Mr. Malloy, come on back up. Next public hearing tonight is the Corbin Meadows Annexation, and I'll open that public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor Jacobson and Council President Wilhelm and council members. I'm Ethan Porter, here, Planner One with the city, here to present the Corbin Meadows Annexation, case file ANNX 10-2019. We have the owners, John Corbin, here in the audience tonight, and then he's also representing, I believe, his mother, Carol Han Barton, as well, for they own the property here that we're looking at annexing in. The applicant for them, representing them, is Ace Solutions, who is also here tonight to represent the owners. The requested action tonight is for the city council. The applicant is wishing that you review and approve the annexation request of 20 acres for the proposed single-family R1 zoning designation October 8, 2019. The Planning and Zoning Commission had a public hearing on this as well, and they are recommending approval for this R1 zoning designation. Here you can see the project location, Hatchton, red. We have Bluegrass Lane running east and west in the county here, and then Hope Avenue running east and west as well within the city. You have Cecil Road running north and south, and then Greens Ferry Road here running north and south. This location here is Greens Ferry Elementary as well, just for your reference. Looking more closely at the property, we have large-lot residential homes within Cootney County. Currently, there is two in the county. Looking at the physical characteristics, there's no significant topography or vegetation issues with this project location. And then, the water provider would be Ross Point Water District, and then City of Post Falls would be the sewer provider. Getting kind of a more idea and feel of this, here's a picture on Bluegrass Lane, looking to the east at the subject site. Here is looking south on Bluegrass Lane at one of the larger, one of the two large lots there that have the homes on them. And then here is looking to the west on Bluegrass Lane as well. So, Planning and Zoning Commission met and recommended zone change based on these six criteria. Number four and six don't apply, since it's not commercial or industrial. But basically, they made the decision based on consistency with the future land use map, consistency with the goals and policies found in the comprehensive plan. The no-negative impacts based on street classification, traffic patterns, the existing development, and future land uses, community plans, and the actual features of the land itself, as well as the limited neighborhood commercial and lower-density residential zoning is typically assigned for properties as they proceed farther from the higher urban activity, which this would be the case. Looking closely here at the zoning, you can see here Hatchton, black, this is the subject property here that's looking to be annexed in. You have county lands in the white here, and then R1 residential in the yellow, commercial in the red, and then there's a little sliver of limited commercial that you can see here as well to the southeast. Here's the future land use designation. It's designated as residential, which would be consistent with the future land use map as allowing the zone changes R1. And then, looking further at the annexation policy review, it can be further expanded in your staff reports, but I'm going to highlight some pertinent ones to this project. We're looking at the completion and continuation of pedestrian network. This would, if you look back here, this would allow for further connectivity for road and sidewalks along the subject property on the south side of Bluegrass Lane here, or AKA Hope Avenue. So that would continue it closer to Greens Ferry Elementary. That would provide a better connectivity and further connection for kids to walk to school and such. Also, looking at this, infill pockets within the county. Technically, this would be kind of an infill pocket. I'll expand a little bit more about this in the upcoming slides. But looking at that, here you can see some nearby development and kind of things in the works as well. Here you have Green Meadows subdivision that's being developed currently. To the east of that, you also have some R1 that was previously approved for annexation into the city, as well as R2, and then a little portion of commercial in the northeast corner. Tonight, you'll hear from John about the Hingston property annexation, which is located here. And then, obviously, right here is what we're talking about for this project, Corbin Meadows Annexation. There's been some discussion, nothing set in stone, but some preliminary discussions of bringing this parcel into the city as well, five acres here. So with this being said, the idea of this slide is to actually show you that through these developments, we are actually closing in and making this more of a pocket, and then actually incorporating more of the pocket into the city, which is consistent with the comprehensive plan. And so, looking further at having utility infrastructure readily available, we have the east R1 subdivision, they already have connections for sewer and water, and to hook up with the infrastructure already in place. Consistency with city master plans kind of goes along with that as far as utilities, as well as transportation, making that connection and turning Bluegrass Lane, incorporating into Hope Avenue, and continuing Hope Avenue on the east and west. Also, looking at, you have annexation policy review, the park systems, as well as being, having those accessories or those amenities to the people who are eventually going to be potentially, if this gets passed, to live there. And then, looking at the Parks Mile buffer map, you can see that this annexation is located right here, which is within the park miles buffer, and would be serviced by the existing parks already in place, and the future ones. And so, looking further at the annexation agreement inclusions, these are a lot of words, so I'm going to summarize it. In this slide here, there's a private well association right here on this property, this little square, that serves the surrounding county homes and properties. And so, with this annexation, the well would maintain in place and also be serving the users as well. At the time of all the users being incorporated into the city, that private well, the city would seek transfer rights for water rights over at that time. So, that's kind of what that first annexation inclusion agreement includes regarding that private well. And then, looking at the second annexation inclusion, the dedications of rights away, which basically would be on the Bluegrass Lane, as well as providing survey data for that private well site as well. These are the agencies that we're routed to, and then we heard back from Cootney County Fire and Rescue, as well as Post Falls Highway District, excuse me, Highway District, both remain neutral on this project. Do you have any questions?
Ethan, so the private well will service this annexation to start with, or will that...
No, so it will stay intact here to service the surrounding. I believe it services 27, if I'm correct.
Okay, but not this, if this is annexed, the city would provide the waters at Ross Point?
Ross Point.
Ross Point, great, thank you.
Any further questions?
That was my question.
Yes.
So, is the well a private water association?
Correct, it is.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, sir. The applicant wishes to speak.
Good evening. I'm Roger Glessner with Ace Solutions, 609 North Calgary Court. We represent the applicants for this annexation request. Thank you, staff, for the report. We do agree with the report, as it was stated. We believe that this is the best and appropriate use for this property. It's a part of infill. You can see that from some of the slides that he showed, the whole area around it is being annexed in and slowly being developed. So this is, you know, we've got this, we're creating an island of Cootney County in the middle of this developed area around it. And so, this would be considered, in my mind, a piece of infill that is probably, should be favorable to the city. We believe that the R1 zoning with this annexation would be the proper use for this land, as well as the access onto Bluegrass Meadows, or Bluegrass Road, and eventually Hope Avenue, serving as access, would be adequate for the traffic flow that's going to be created by this subdivision, and then possibly some future subdivisions. There were two concerns or questions that came up with the planning and zoning hearing that I'd like to touch on. One of them was the water association that exists there. It is on its own lot. Right now, it is owned by the applicant, and it is part of the annexation. We have met with those folks, and we do have a verbal agreement to keep that intact. And, you know, with further development on the property, we'd make sure that we have proper setbacks, and we'd make sure that that well and facility was protected until at such time it isn't used anymore. Also, with that well and reservoir, there are also some water mains that run through the property, and we would protect and preserve those as well as we move forward. Bluegrass Meadows, of course, with this annexation, would be the main access to this property. And with this annexation, we would be subsequently subdividing the property and then improving Bluegrass Meadows to a, I believe it's a major arterial is what the designation is. And so, we'd be looking at doing our half of the improvements on that road. That was one of the other concerns that we heard with the P&amp;Z hearing, is who's going to take care of that road? And so, with this annexation, of course, this would bring this into the city system. We would be paving and improving the south portion of that road, and then the city would be maintaining it at that point. And so, that would take some of the burden off of the people that are maintaining it at this time. It is, Hope Avenue will, I believe it does, or will soon extend out to Highway 41. And so, this is going to be a major, pretty major road in the future. That'll give the people in this subdivision the opportunity to go right out to Highway 41. So it'd be, it looks like it's pretty easy access in and out. So, we believe that this is the appropriate use for this property, and we'd appreciate an approval on this annexation.
Thank you. Any questions?
Has Ross Point Water District approved this subdivision or this request?
They have, they've given us a will-serve letter. In fact, they have a brand-new main that goes down Bluegrass that they put in just last year, so they're pretty much already set up for it.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question, but I think it's probably for John or someone else within the city. You mentioned that you would be responsible for the southern half of Bluegrass. Does that mean that we're going to build a whole street, or we're just going to build half a street?
Well, it's going to be considerably wider than what it is. So I believe that we'll be building 24 or 28 feet of asphalt and curb and gutter width, which is wider than what's there already. And it would be, it would be offset to the southern side of the right-of-way, but it would be wider than what's there right now.
Okay, great. Thank you. Who wishes to testify? We have one person wishing to testify, and they are neutral, Nate Brennan.
Hello, my name's Nate Brennan, and I live at 2883 Bluegrass Lane. So I'm just north where the house sits back, just to the north of this proposed annexation. So I just want to make three kind of quick points. The first one, at the planning and zoning, a couple terms they used was obvious influx or obvious infill. When I, I've lived in Post Falls since I bought my... When I, I've lived in Post Falls since I bought my first house here in 2001, but I've been in this house since 2011 or '12. The obvious influx has been created since I've been there. When you, when you only have to be adjacent on one side or one corner, it's pretty easy to go like this, right? So there's a lot more obvious than when down to the city and look, there's infills that are all the way down to Mullen or whatever. So just, you know, just for what it's worth, this doesn't seem super obvious to me, you know? It was kind of created. All this other, when you show the city map, when you see the other pieces of city around it, right now, they're still just fields. There's no houses besides in Tullamore and Fieldstone. They're kind of creeping, but they're just getting annexed in and dirt's getting moved. We like the country living there, that's why we moved there. We have horses, goats, four-H animals, pigs, chickens, you know? I just built a barn, so I'm in construction, so when you see this sort of thing happen, it's good for my business. So, you know, what's good for more people than a few, I guess, is all right. But I just kind of wanted to point that out. If you drive down there, you could even see in his pictures the three-rail fence and stuff. It's not, it doesn't look like city to me right now. If you were to drive out there tomorrow, you wouldn't say it's maybe an obvious place for an additional lady houses. But, you know, I'll probably wind up working on them or one fashion or another. That was my first point. My second point is, the road, I don't know if Roger touched on it, if it's going to go all the way through, that right now, that road is considered a non-maintained public right-of-way, which is the very worst kind of road you can live on. You know, I've put thousands of dollars into that road myself, I plow it. We've had help, we have less neighbors now, but we take care of the road ourselves, and it used to be closed off at the end, so whatever we put into it has stayed. When this was annexed in over on this side, I don't know what it's called, but when they added these, they opened up the mound that was there, and so now people cut through. We got a new school, new Greens Ferry Elementary on the end of it. It just makes sense for people to go through there, so our best defense now is to let the potholes get bigger so less people drive on it, which isn't great, you know? We've got an expensive place there. So hopefully, the road will go all the way through. If you take it another 1,200 feet and stop it, this is going to create more of a problem. I mean, it's already a shortcut. If you try to drive in front of the high school, or real-life church, or Prairie View Elementary or Greens Ferry, it's a lot quicker for people to take a shortcut and go through. So I don't know, maybe if Roger's going to do a rebuttal, I don't really understand if the road's going to go all the way through, if it's going to stop right here. And I think they're only going to develop on that side. So we do have an issue there with the road, that's the second thing. And the last thing is, on a new subject, I'm the president of Prairie Water Association, which is just a volunteer position, not even a super water expert, but our pump house sits on there, it does service, like you said, 27 houses in there. I've already met with Roger and John on it, being proactive on figuring out a solution. A lot of the neighbors are enough people about what's going to happen with that. Those water rights are valuable, and I don't know that they're going to go to the city at some point or whatever. I don't think that's going to happen. But there's water lines that run right through the property here, and then the pump house sits on there. We've come up with a solution, defensive aid and everything that they say that is going to happen, I think is going to, is going to have to happen, that'll work great. My only concern is if, if it changes hands, I don't know, I don't understand how that works, you know what I mean? If it's not John and Roger dealing with it, and it's the next guy, and he decides he doesn't want to do that, we need to be protected there. And that was my last point.
Perfect.
Thank you, guys.
Butler.
Yes, we do recognize that the well and the reservoir and the water mains that run through the property are very important to the people that are already being served by it. And this owner and myself, we are going to look to protect and preserve that until someday when it isn't needed. I think there's, there'll be more design considerations and other things further down the road when we get into a subdivision application. But we do recognize that, and we do, we will strive to preserve that.
I just got a quick question. I know on the water rights with the well, though, for the access, it's a verbal agreement now, will it be in writing at some time to protect them? Because I think if anybody went to sell their houses, they almost have to show a written agreement in writing that they have access to that one.
Yes, it will. And again, it'll be, you know, I don't want to get too far into the subdivision application portion of it, but what the plan is, is that it will create a lot around that that will be left there, and they'll hold easement on it to operate there until such time they don't need to. And so that'll be part of the plating process, part of the design process.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Thanks, sir. Now close the public hearing. Counsel, it's in your hands.
I have a question. Can we legally build something into this agreement that those water rights have to remain the way they are?
So normally, when we do an annexation agreement for development, we require that the applicant dedicate their water rights on that property to the water purveyor so that they're in a position to then have the water rights to provide water to the development. Here, because those water rights are tied up serving the surrounding properties, we can essentially have the agreement say that at the time that that association, that private association's dissolved, that the water rights would then have to be dedicated to Ross Point.
But we can protect them in the meantime?
So I'm not sure that we can go that far, because we, it's a private association, a private agreement, they need to work out that, a relationship between themselves. But we would not necessarily need to require that they dedicate those rights today because they're still being used.
Yeah. I mean, is there a way we can build that into this?
So...
I guess you know where I'm going with this. I want to just protect those 27 people.
Sure, and I think that, as the applicant said, once we get into plating, if they're creating a lot on the plat, and if they're dedicating easements to service that property on the plat, that resolves the issue. Otherwise, it becomes a contract between private parties to how they, they're the folks that need to resolve that. We're not really in a position to get in the middle of that discussion.
Okay. Sorry, sir, we can't take comments, sorry.
The guy was going to try to offer some help on this.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right? Yeah, I'm good with that.
I have a question for Warren as well. Warren, so the 27 property owners are obviously in the county, and so, is that right?
Yes.
And so at a time when they would want to come into the city, is when that water association would go away?
So essentially, as each of those properties change hands, apply for annexation, you know, plat, and begun that redevelopment process, as those properties do that over time, then, once that last property goes through that transition, then the well isn't needed anymore to serve their association.
Okay.
So it could be sometime, at the rate we've been seeing changes, it could be relatively soon.
Okay.
It sure sounds to me that, in listening to the opponent, that they will create the separate line, do deed restrictions on that to allow those easements to protect those people. Sounds like that is their plan. Joe.
I wish I could. I'd just like to say that I'm not a big fan of annexing property that really only comes into the borders of the city on one side, but when you look at the fact that this is an infill piece and everything else is starting to fill in around it, this would be the one where I would say, okay, yeah, I wish I had a magic wand where I could get all that property to the south and come in at the same time, but...
That's pretty tough, if you look at that, to get any parcel that's connected on more than one side right now.
Exactly. So I would move to approve the annexation as presented.
Second. Motion, seconds, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Wilhelm?
Hi.
Malloy?
Hi.
Orders?
Hi.
Thorson?
Hi.
Anthony?
Hi.
Wolf?
Hi.
Motion passes, thank you. Next item up is the Hinkston annexation, and with that, we'll open the public hearing. Sir, I hope you understood that once we close, I...
I was just trying to clarify.
I appreciate that. Wasn't trying to be rude.
Nope, I understand.
Nobody even said anything about it being R1, too.
About what?
It's R1, zoned R1.
I've been saying that, it's almost a big group, it's R1. It's R1. Mr. Manley?
Yes, Hinkston Property Annexation, case file ANNX 9-2019. The owner of the property is Elmer Hinkston, with the applicant representing the owner, Lake City Engineering. So the requested action is for the city council to review and approve the annexation request of about 20.6 acres with an R1 zoning designation. P&amp;Z forwarded this to you with the R1 on October 8th this year. Project location, as you see here, here is Prairie Avenue running east-west. You have Cecil running along, or Tubby run along the eastern boundaries, just west of Highway 41 and Prairie. At this location, we have a future regional park at this location. Currently, it's mostly agriculture with a residence on it. The water would be provided by Ross Point and the sewer provided by the city of Post Falls. What you see here is the, very similar to the last public hearing, the six review criteria for a zone change request as part of an annexation. And bold here are the items that were the basis for that recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission, that the proposal be consistent with the future land use map, consistent with the goals and policies found in the comp plan, be consistent with street classifications, traffic patterns, existing development, future land uses, community plans, and any other geographic natural features. Also, limited or neighborhood or lower density be further away from your urban core, high-intense areas. So going into some of that, you have the, to the east, you've got the R1 Tullamore area. To the northeast of this, you do got that technology mixed property on the north side of Prairie within the city. Here is the, kind of this open county land currently. You did see, and I'll show it as well, that we have currently approved an annexation for this location with some mixed zoning that's adjacent to this. And you, as you're aware, that this is a decreasing area of county, aspiring to come into the city of Post Falls. Looking at the, this is nearby development, just like the last public hearing, you know, here's that adjacent project with mixed zoning, Corbin, we just saw in this proposal, Hinkston with the pre-op, where the star is at. Here's the future land use map, it's residential, they're requesting residential, so they're consistent with the future land use map. So that kind of wraps up the basis for that zone change request and the baseline. So now we go into the annexation policy overview, and is it consistent with some of the policies? You know, you're looking for continuation of the pedestrian network, connecting neighborhoods to amenities. With development, you do get the adjacent sidewalk or multi-use trail that connects to and through activity on neighborhoods. Good example, you look at Fieldstone, at one time, it was a big old field. Now you have housing developments, and then through development, now they've got multi-use trails around it, parks internally, and everything's connected. Looking at the city master plans, this was reviewed and found that it could be consistent with all the master plans. Utility and infrastructure can be provided to the site, so we can meet that policy review. Looking at infill pockets, this one is more or less creating an infill pocket, but it also, at the same time, reduces the finger. So going to this, this is technically expanding out. When this closes, creates an infill pocket, but it also decreases that gap, that finger poking into Post Falls and that east part of town. Also looking at the proposal, be a logical extension to the city's services and be consistent with our park system. And here, we got the park and open space analysis showing where this is at. We got the regional park plan for this location, we got the Tullamore Park. So when you look at that, it would meet their level of service boundaries analysis for growth and for infill. Similarly, we do have some inclusions for an annexation agreement. You see typical stuff, the grants of right-of-way, I mean, the grants of water rights, appropriate grants of right-of-way, as you see there, for Prairie Avenue, Cecil Road, and Kildir. You also see that this place is encumbered by that sanitary surcharge that's adjusted annually, and it's also to be consistent with the KNPO critical access corridor policy. So here's the agencies it's routed, and the police department commented as being neutral.
Questions, John? Thanks, sir.
All right, thank you.
Apple him.
For the record, Drew Dittman, Lake City Engineering, 126 East Poplar Avenue in the city of Coeur d'Alene, representing the Hinkston family tonight. As John had indicated, asking for annexation and zoning on approximately 20 acres in that infill pocket that we've been hearing about all night tonight. You can see it here on this map, you've got Prairie Avenue to the north, you've got Cecil bounding the property on the east, and Kildir on the west. And as John had indicated, you have recently annexed property to the west here, and then this is all part of the Tullamore development. This would be the city property right here, where the city's developing their new park. So this is the second or third time we've heard about annexation policies and zone policies tonight, so I'll be brief and go through it. John's discussed it, it was in the staff report. It's in the submittals that we made. You know, basically, is it a good fit for the city? That's what we're looking at. It's an infill piece, as we talked about, it's bound on two sides by the city, by residential development on both the east and the west. Although the park is on the east, it's still zoned R1, and it's part of that Tullamore project, which is a residential project. Is it in conformance with the goals and policies and the comp plan? There's a full comp plan analysis that we submitted, there's also one that staff did that's in the staff report. Some of the comp plan goals are actually discussed in the decision from planning and zoning as well. Real quick, this is the future land use map, you can see the property there in yellow, which is residential, so we are in conformance with that with the R1 zone request. You know, compatible with surrounding land uses, both existing and in the future. Again, we've got residential subdivisions, residentially zoned property to the east, to the west, so from that standpoint, it is, you've got, this is the, one of the biggest areas that's growing fast for residential uses in this, in this city, is the Tullamore area here and is that area. So we do believe it's compatible from that standpoint. Conformance with strategic and master plans, you've got your water master plan. This property will be served by Ross Point Water District, and we've talked with them, and they have the capacity and the willingness to do it. From a wastewater standpoint, this property drains back into the Tullamore Sewer Shed, so there's some improvements that are anticipated to the Tullamore Lift Station. That's why John suggested this is part of that sewer surcharge area. We're aware of that, and we understand that. Transportation standpoint, you've got Prairie Avenue, which is a principal arterial, it's a critical access corridor, which means access to Prairie Avenue is limited, restricted to certain spots. We don't anticipate any accesses from this property to Prairie Avenue, so that shouldn't be an issue. Cecil's a major collector, Kildir's a minor collector. What does that all mean? Means we're going to have to dedicate some right-of-way, we're going to have to build some roads when we do a subdivision, when we come back. All of that's been anticipated in the transportation plan. John threw up the park slide, so this is within that park service area. I don't have that slide, but John showed it, so it's within that. And then, you know, bottom line, is it a logical extension of the city, as we've discussed previously? It is, it's in that infill pocket. We think it's a good fit. As I said, this area's seeing some tremendous growth in particular. Here's your zoning map. You can see we've got the Tullamore property to the east, which is all residential R1. You've got that newly annexed property to the west, which is a combination of R1, R2, and then it's got a little commercial component to it. In the corner, we're requesting R1, which fits nicely in between there. Again, you've seen this, this is the zoning criteria that John went through, we've seen it twice tonight, so this will be the third time. I won't really go through these line item by line item because they're in your staff report, and we've talked about them, but again, you know, it is in conformance with comprehensive plan, it's in conformance with your strategic and master plans, and it's a good fit. There are some conditions that John had thrown up there that are in the P&amp;Z recommendation. We're aware of all of those conditions, and we don't take exception to any of them. So I think I'll stand for questions.
Questions? Drew?
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Any wish and testify?
I have none.
I am not going to, I'm gonna assume you're not going to rebut that, right?
Yeah.
The public hearing, council, how would you like that?
I've moved to approve the Hinkston annexation, file number ANNX dash zero 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 nine dash two zero one nine.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion? Roll call, please.
Malloy?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. And we've got one last public hearing, and I feel bad because I'm thinking this one's gonna be very quick, and I apologize for having you wait till the end, but with that, I will open the Ford Vacation Annexation, and I would like to say that the heat is now working.
Yeah. My lady called the mommy's. Yes, you are correct, this should be pretty brief.
I'm also correct about the heat, admit it.
It has warmed up.
It has, thankfully.
So yes, the Ford Street Vacation, the BACA three two thousand nineteen, applicant owner, Rose Marie Sells, or Maria Sells, their requested action is to review and approve vacation of a portion of Ford Street. This is actually a pretty unique situation here that was pretty fascinating as I discovered more and researched it about this, but. So anyhow, there's the location, here's Ford Street, it ran parallel to Idaho, and at one time, you know, I mean, intent was to go to Maple, they did a vacation, as you see here, in nineteen eighty-three, did my best to kind of represent what had occurred in blue, this was the full right-of-way that went down to, to and through, the, through ordinance four twenty-nine, they vacated the east forty feet, and I believe the west ten feet, and they kept this other remaining portion, so it's probably the only one I've read that kind of did some vacation like this. So it's unique. You can see to, on the left side, kind of the issue that arose here, and this is the vacated portion they're requesting, is, and I don't know how it happened, a structure was permitted that appears to be on some portion of this right-of-way that currently exists as a remnant. Staff has reviewed this, and before I go into that, one more thing to add, you see the blue line here, that's the wa, that's the water, this location may not be exact, it actually may be even further east than that. Staff desires to eventually figure out a way to work with the appropriate people to get this water line through an easement, service it. On that note, we would request that with vacation, though, it would be conditioned that whatever is remaining on the east side of this structure to the limits of this right-of-way be reserved, reserved for an easement to give us that opportunity to flexibility to potentially someday relocate this water line within that easement area. So there's the concern there that we have from staff, there's the exhibits, there's pretty much the nutshell, so I don't know if you have any more questions for staff, we routed it, we didn't receive any comments from the jurisdictions noticed.
Well, it's interesting when the owner went to sell the property and they did a title search, they found an easement through there that nobody knew about, or a, the road in there that had not been vacated, so it was an interesting, interesting discovery, I think.
Yes. But this would reduce, they would remove that encumbrance on that property and allow it to sell and still allow the city need be potential corridor for that water line.
So the language supporting the remainder of the easement is in this agreement, correct?
Um, yeah, we would basically be, if you guys chose to approve it, staff would say, well, we would want to have a conditioned approval to attain an easement to protect that, whatever's available, I don't know exactly what that number is at this point in time, but it would take some survey, locational from the building, and then some guarantee of whatever that distance is, probably outside of the eve line to the eastern most prop, line of that right-of-way.
Okay. So that property bounded by the red line is city property, is that correct?
That'd be, yeah, right-of-way.
And we're not getting compensated for that land?
So I can answer that, we're not allowed to be compensated for that.
Okay.
Um, some jurisdictions have that ability, cities do not, so when you vacate property, you're not able to ask for compensation in return. The, the theory is that when alleys or streets were created or dedicated, it was given to the public for public use for so long as the public needed it. And once that public need was no longer there, that it reverted back, the ownership reverted back to the adjoining property owners under the theory that they gave up that property initially in the first instance. So we're not able to ask for compensation in return for vacations.
Well, that answered my second question, because then I was concerned that we were creating some sort of precedent that.
We do vacations quite often.
Yeah, I thought so, too.
And that building was legally permitted by the city to be built, right?
We don't know. It's, it's an interesting question, we're not sure exactly how long it's been there. My guess is, what happened is that, that when the road was initially vacated, because that vacation is, frankly, it's kind of weird, that you vacate both sides but leave a little bit in the middle, that that happened, my guess is that the property owner was under the impression that the entire street was vacated and build a structure. I don't, we didn't have any records of it being permitted in the city, that doesn't mean it didn't happen, but we don't have any records of it being permitted, so it's, it remains a mystery.
Has it changed hands since the building's been built?
I don't recall, I believe it has, but I don't recall.
The current owner did not build the building.
Okay.
I guess, no questions to John, do we just close the public hearing?
So we take public testimony?
Are there any public testimony? There's one, thank you. Wish to testify in favor, Mel Palmer.
Good evening, Mayor. Hi, City Council. It's right in my neighborhood, and I just wanted to say I'm in favor of it. Normally, I'm not to vacate a road, because I think once you've got it, you need to keep it, but in this case, I think it will clean up an encumbrance that's, you know, on the property, and I don't see that it's gonna be reasonably necessary in the future to run that road, since we've already seen some of those vacated anyway, down to Maple Avenue, so I just wanted to say I'm in favor of it.
Good, thank you. Good to see you. With that, I will close the public hearing. Council, how would you like that?
Ms. Palmer sold me, had moved to approve the Ford Vacation.
Second. Motion second, further discussion? Roll call, please.
Borders?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. John, thanks for being patient tonight. Next item up is unfinished business, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, snow operations plan.
There isn't any snow.
That's a good plan.
To be continued, yeah.
It was a good plan, yeah.
That must be the plan.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. John Beecham, Public Works Director. I wish the plan was no snow for the winter, that would make our jobs easier, but that's not the plan, so. I am here to give a little bit of an update from the information I gave you at the snow operations workshop a couple of meetings ago, including talking about our communication strategy, and then to go over in brief the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty snow plan for all folks listening at home who might be curious about it or who watched the video later. And I, I'll remind you, you did ask me to come back and speak about this again, so there is an excuse to be here.
Who did?
As a result of the workshop, there were a couple of things we were asked to look at. We had proposed not using snow gates on business driveways on our arterials. We talked to a number of businesses. It turns out the contractors who plow their parking lots often don't align with our plowing timeframe, so we would be putting berms in front of driveways that they really had no contractual way to get addressed within a timely manner. So with that, our, we adjusted the plan, and we are planning to use the snow gates on all driveways throughout the city, subject to some caveats that I'll talk about down the road, which is basically if there's too much snow, if we can't do it, we won't. The other comment we had was the desire to make a pretty fancy video talking about the snow operations plan. We still think that's a great idea, but it wasn't something we had time and resources to work on this year, we'd like to talk about it in future. Moving on to the public comments we received, we got twenty-six responses, which I think is pretty good for a public document that's ten pages long, people had to read. Those are all posted on our website, if anybody wants to read them, we thought it was good to post those and post the response to those. This is a snapshot of our website, just showing that the response to comments is located on the left side, you can read that whole document. To talk about some of the communications efforts we've made since the workshop, we did send a brochure out with our utility billing, just talking about the plan in general, things people can do to help us out. Our website's been updated, simplified, has a lot of resources on it, I'll talk about that when I get to the snow plan. We're also embarking on a Twitter adventure this year, this is new for me. We have reserved the handle at Post Falls Snow Plow, we'll post updates there, and what's cool about that is the city's social media can repost those without us having to access the city's social media site, and then also those can be posted into our website as an embedded status update, so we're working on that functionality, we'll have it soon. This is our first tweet, it says this is a test, so. We also have, thanks to the folks in the GIS department, a GIS map that will be a little more interactive than we have in the past. This was something we didn't think we'd be able to do this year, and Bob and Nicole put a lot of time into it and made it happen. Here is a snapshot of what it'll look like, it's pretty simple, if it's green, we've plowed it, if it's yellow, we're working on it, and if it's red, we haven't got there yet, but this is broken up in zones throughout the city, and again, this can be updated by Streets Department supervisors, by myself, folks like that, so we don't have to go through a complicated public outreach process to update it. This will only be used when we're plowing residential areas, so if we're plowing the arterials, we won't use this map, it doesn't update that fast. The other update I wanted to give you, this was the October staffing pie chart, which wasn't very rosy picture. Since then, we've hired a number of folks, we have eleven operators. We're closing in on where we'd like to be, which is full staff, but we feel like we have enough to run two shifts at this point, as of Monday, and we're, we're excited to be there before the snow flies. With that, I was gonna launch into the actual plan itself, so I don't know if you have questions on the updates now, or if you want to hold those till the end, that works, too. All right, so I will now present the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, snow operations plan for the City of Post Falls. The first thing I want to highlight is a new effort, I didn't want this buried at the end, we're doing a volunteer, help-your-neighbor signup sheet, so basically the city's facilitating creation of a list for people to volunteer and help their neighbors. You can sign up either calling the Streets Department or on our website, and the link will be at the end of this presentation. Basically, you're agreeing to provide services without seeking compensation to neighbors who might need it, so. In terms of the operations plan itself, this plan is similar to last year's, but addresses a lot more specific details and outlines staff allocations, things like that. We're hoping we'll have improved consistency, improved response, and then a little bit more thought-out plan as to where we get to each region of the city. Last year, there was an effort called Snow Worries, we're sort of doing away with that as a, as a tool, but we do have lots of ways for folks to get in touch with us, and what we're doing with everybody who gets in touch to, with us, unless it's an emergency, we're gonna put that into a cleanup operations list, which will then be prioritized based on helping the most people throughout the city, once we get to the end of the snow plow. So rather than abandon plowing the whole city and go deal with a few individual instances, we'll finish the plow and then go deal with those individual instances, unless they're an emergency, like I said. So we're shifting our focus to the overall road conditions of the city. We've also built into our policy, and you can read the details of it, some safety parameters for the crew, with last February's snowstorm, we were running into, well, how many days should we work in a row, how, how many hours can you work, and we wanted that really clearly spelled out, what we'll do if we run into those numbers. In terms of our operations, we will be using snow gates again this year, the plan is to snowgate all driveways. We will not be using the snowgate for mailboxes, for fire hydrants, and that sort of thing, at some point, you would be gating everything, and then the snow doesn't have anywhere to go. Their use can be discontinued based on staff discretion, that really comes to me most of the time, and basically that is if we're significantly slowing down plowing the arterials, then we could make the decision not to plow the business driveways. That would be something where there'd have to be a significant time savings for the crews doing arterials. The other discontinued or delayed circumstances, if there's too much snow to use the gates in the residential areas, we would discontinue the use of the gates throughout the whole city, plow the traveled way, which is the, where people are driving, get it so that most people can get around somewhat, and then come back through into a second plow to clear the rest of the road out, knowing that it's not going to be as good as if we were able to take the time to do it all right the first time, so. So to break down our operations, there's several different modes that we operate in, regular operations is basically just street business, no snow plowing operations, we'll do de-icing in advance of storms, get into priority roads, then all the roads, we'll do drifting mitigation as we need to, and then we'll clean up any issues that we're notified of at the end of the, or that we discover after all that plowing is complete. Basically, it looks like this, if there's snow planned, we do de-icing, if two inches falls, we plow the main roads throughout town, that's arterials and collectors, generally with also providing access to neighborhoods that don't have arterials or collectors or school areas. If four inches of snow falls, we'll plow the whole city, again, generally, and then we'll do our cleanup. I want to go back and say, if we are plowing residential and the arterials deteriorate in their condition, we'll finish the areas we're in, and then go back and plow the arterials and collectors again, and jump back to where we were in the residential neighborhoods. We won't start the residential over at the beginning, we'll go back to where we were when we left off. I can go through these in detail, but this is basically what I was just walking through, regular operations, crews just doing normal streets business, de-icing, we can do some extended shifts as needed to make sure we get that coverage. For priority operations, we'll be working two shifts, seven days a week, as needed. This is an old slide, the commercial driveways will receive snowgate service, I recycled this slide and didn't update it. This is not intended to be a detailed map, but you can kind of see the grid of the priority routes throughout the city, those are the red and gold in this map. What we tried to do is make sure that within a quarter mile of just about anywhere, you'd have a priority route, so some folks are closer, some folks are further away, but we tried to make a grid people could trans, be transported through. For full operations, again, we're just going through the city area by area, plowing all the residential streets. Says we jump back to priority routes as needed. What that looks like in a blown-up version is we'll start with, this is Zone One in each quadrant, so Zone Four represents quadrant four, Zone One. You can go to our interactive GIS map, type in your address, and it'll show you which quadrant, which area you live in. So we'll go through these in the same order each time, so folks know about when we'll be there, and then, as I showed in the communications slide a little bit earlier, these will turn green once they've been plowed, so you can see when the plow crews are getting close to your area. The key thing with drifting is it gets really bad really fast if we need to, it's kind of an emergency, we'll pull off what we're doing and deal with drifts. We will try to use other staff throughout the city if we can. And then when we get to cleanup operations, this actually receives probably the most attention of anything we do, this is after we've plowed everything, there's a snowbank here, there's a ice block here that needs addressed, those go into a list, our supervisors can prioritize that based on what equipment is needed, and then distribute that workforce out to deal with those issues. Generally, we're gonna work forty-hour weeks during this part, that's in an effort to keep our overtime and comp time accumulations reasonable. The point of this slide is there are a lot of ways you can contact the city, all of those are going on the same list, so I'd encourage folks, especially folks listening at home, if you want to fill out the form on our website, know that goes the exact same place it'll go if you call us or email us or post a Facebook comment, so just because you use one format or another, doesn't mean you'll get higher priority, or lower priority, I guess is the concern most people have. Our goal with our communications this year is just to be really clear about our intended approach, and then to post regular status updates on our website, on social media, and on that GIS map. There's a There's a whole bunch more information at our website, you can dive into these plans in detail, they're all posted there, there's a quick link on the first City of Post Falls website, you get to, down at the bottom, it says Snow Operations, it takes you right to this website. To show where things are, you've got the operations plan, the status map, that's where you find what quadrant you're in, volunteer signup if you want to help your neighbors out, and then how to report issues via all our contact information. With that, any questions?
Thanks, John, good information, any questions?
Thank you for your time.
Onward and upward, we'll see how it goes. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is citizens' issue, and this section of the agenda is reserved for citizens wishing to address the council regarding a city-related issue that is not on the agenda, any wishing to testify? Next up is new business, and it's the water reclamation polymer system upgrade.
Hey, good evening, Mayor and Council, thank you for having me out here again, Adam Tate, Chief Operator for Water Reclamation. So I want to give you kind of a discussion on our poly system upgrade we have planned, and looking for approval on. So this is just kind of a picture of our current poly system we have online, so poly, polymer is, it's a chemical we mix, we create, I guess, comes in a dry granular, we convert into this batch tanks, and we use that for mixing with our biolsolids at the plant for de-watering. So this polymer is actually what allows us to de-water that solid down to a substance you can actually haul in a truck rather than a liquid. Consists of a couple of transfer pumps, there's a batch tank and an aging tank, this system was original, I'd say next to zero modifications, other than fixing broken pipes, so it'll last 35 years, so gotten all our money's worth out of it, and all this is actually staying in place with the kind of recommendations we're putting forward here. This here, there's a picture of Timont, one of the operators, plant operators, this is how our current operation is, so we manually dump in these buckets of polymer into a mixing apparatus, technical term is a hoop-danny, so that's how official it is. So we actually manually dump in those buckets of dry polymer into a funnel, mixes into this tank, we do this two or three times a day, depends on how much we're having to press for that day. The main issue with this system is safety, so polymer mixing is one of our higher instances of safety issues, for one, it's a dry polymer, it's granular, but it's got a lot of fine particles with it, so that entire room is covered in a film of polymer, and it gets in your eyes, really is an eye irritant, because anything it touches with moisture, instantly turns into this slime film, so gets on your skin, gets on your eyes, real bare to get off of you, gets in your lungs as well, and even bigger issue is slip hazard, so numerous issues over the years, just in the 11 years I've been here, countless falls, slip strips and falls caused by this, particles around, and we do our best to keep it clean, but it's inevitable, it's everywhere. So we kind of had a couple of goals set up, one, be able to reduce our time spent supervising this system, so we spend hours and hours a week just keeping polymer mixed and batched up for the press, press runs six to eight hours a day, every single day of the week, so spend a lot of time in that room, keeping polymer mixed up, and then also limit potential hazards, so except the polymer, it's slippery, a lot of injuries come from it, as well as slip strips and falls, but also eye inhalation, stuff like that. Then also, improve our dose accuracy, so you can see our high-tech measuring, we have a bucket that we dump into that funnel, so this new system actually gives a precise dosing, exact measurements every time, so this should limit overdosing, so wasting polymer, and also give us more consistent polymer that we can hopefully produce better cake, better cake dried solids, dried solids meaning it's cheaper to haul away. This project was outlined in our 2020 budget, under our wastewater operating budget as well. So we went to our current polymer supplier, which is Environmental Resources, and they gave us a recommendation for what they proposed putting in this. So they gave us this, the Powdercat NP200M, it's an automated system, it's got a hopper, so we actually only have to handle this polymer probably once a week, maybe once every other week, so limited use for operators actually having to fill it and be around that airborne chemical. And also, like I said, this is more precise than our bucket method, so this is actually producing regular dosing every time. So Environmental proposed that process, $47,762 for the unit, that includes installation, setup, and training on that, and then we have another $2,000 for contingencies, in case there's extra things that are missed in their proposal, so total request of $49,762. That's all I have for you.
Adam, can we assume that $47,000, it's an expense upfront, but that's going to make us more efficient?
Absolutely.
Hopefully save us materials that are being mixed by hand, hopefully eliminate the potential for injury and time off due to injury, et cetera.
Right.
So hopefully, it's going to be an investment that's going to pay off for itself down the road.
Absolutely, yeah, I would, the operator time spent alone is going to be huge for us, and honestly, the downtime of injuries is even bigger, we've had a lot of people, not serious hurt, but injured enough that it's a safety concern, more than cost savings, it's a safety concern.
It's nice to see the cost savings come into play, though. Any questions?
Efficiency is going to be a big factor.
Yeah, the efficiency, our bucket method is inconscionous, yeah.
I really appreciate the information, but I'm just, I'm curious, if this was already part of the budget, why did we have to?
Because it's a contract, so the council has to approve the contract.
Okay. So that $47,000 was for the equipment, basically, is there an ongoing annual, or monthly expense?
No monthly.
I would move to approve the water reclamation polymer system upgrade.
Motion second, further discussion. Sean, please take the roll.
Borders?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you, thanks, Adam. Next item up is ordinances and resolutions, and tonight, we have one on mobile vending.
Move to place the ordinance Mobile Vending on its first and only reading by title only while under suspension of the rules.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Thorson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Motion passes, Mr. Wilson.
An ordinance amending the municipal code of the City of Post Falls, Cootney County, Idaho, adopting a new municipal code, Chapter 5.30, establish regulations for mobile food vending, including definitions, licensing requirements for mobile food vendors and mobile food vending sites, adopting operating requirements for mobile food vendors and mobile food vending sites, establishing that first and second instances of operating without a license are infractions punishable by a fine of $100 or $300, respectively, and subsequent violations or misdemeanor punishable by a fine of up to $1,000, or by imprisonment for up to six months or both, authorizing fees to be established by resolution, and establishing appeal procedures, repealing conflicting ordinances, providing severability, providing for the publication of this ordinance by summary, and providing an effective date.
Move to approve the ordinance Mobile Vending, to direct the clerk to assign the appropriate number, and that it be published by summary only.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Roll call.
Anthony?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Next item up, administrative staff reports?
We have none tonight, sir.
Perfect. Mayor comments at this point? I have none, other than I don't agree with John, I think we are going to get snow. So drive safely, please. Council comments? Do not need an executive?
We do not.
So the next motion is?
Adjourn.
All those in favor?
Aye.
You need to adjourn.